Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, May 21st, Michigan City City Council Meeting. If you would please, please silence all electronic and computer devices. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And in your moment of silent prayer this evening, please remember Candace Silvas's grandmother, who passed away this week. Ms. Silva, take the roll call, please.
Mr. Beatry.
Present.
Ms. Carnes.
Present.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Hamilton.
Present.
Mr. Prezwalinski.
Present.
Ms. Silvas. Mr. Simmons.
Present.
And Mr. Stemley. We have seven present and no one else, I mean, two absent.
And you both, Ms. Silvas and Mr. Stemley notified me that they would not be present for this evening's council meeting, so they are excused. The approval of the minutes of the last May 8th meeting, everyone's got a copy of them. And are there any corrections, deletions, or a motion to approve the minutes? Motion to approve by Councilman Fitzpatrick and seconded by Councilman Dabney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those approved. The minutes are approved. Reports of standing committees. Councilman Dabney.
All right. Tonight's Finance Committee meeting was called to order 6:02 PM by Chairman Dabney. Review the claims filed since the last meeting. Committee members Beatry and Prezwalinski were present as well as Councilmen Simmons and Fitzpatrick. City Controller Rich Murphy was also in attendance. Claims reviewed totaled $87,551.47 from the Riverboat Fund and $1,159.81 from the Boyd Development Fund for a total claim docket of $88,711.28. There were no other outstanding issues to discuss, and Councilman Beatry knew to recommend approval of the docket with a second by Councilman Prezwalinski, and the motion was approved unanimously. So the docket was approved unanimously. The meeting was adjourned at 6:08 PM. The summary of the claim goes as follows. From the Riverboat Fund, Enterprise Rent-A-Car, $314.30. JW Turf, Inc., $14,093.99. James Meyer and Associates, PC, $472.50. Kennedy Outdoor Solutions, $64,937.93. Larson-Danielsen Construction, $6,000 even. Spar Uniform, $628.75. Tent Masters, $200 even. Waymire APS Doing Business as Waymire, $904 even. For a total from the Riverboat Fund of $87,551.47. From the Boyd Development Fund, we had the News Dispatch, $480 even. Corporate Payment Systems, $679.81. For a total from the Boyd Development Fund of $1,159.81. And once again, a total claim docket of $88,711.28. And that concludes the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Councilman Dabney. Are there reports of any special or select committees? I don't believe so. Reports of other city officers and departments. And that brings us Mr. Craig Phillips, our City Planner, to present the Redevelopment Commission and Planning and Inspection Departments' 2018 Annual Report. Good evening, gentlemen.
Great. Sorry, this, I do it all the time, right? Good evening, Michigan City, Indiana. And these are definitely exciting times to be part of the leadership of this community. I commend all of you for running for office and actually being in office. I've been around since 1989. My name's Don Babcock. I live at 135 Shorewood Drive. I'm honored to be the current President of the Michigan City Redevelopment Commission. But I don't know, I was here a while back when Clarence Hulse came by and he gave kind of their Michigan City Now Report. It was a really nice annual report. And one of the key pages in that is that since 2012 to 2018, this community has experienced $1 billion of new investment in the community. That's 600 million in public funds, as well as complemented by $400 million in private funds for a total of $1 billion in virtually six years. So a tremendous accomplishment, and I think it's being recognized in many different areas. Bring something a little bit more closer to home. Mr. Hulse from the EDCMC was also in the paper here a while back relative to a chart that was put together by the Realtor Association and specifically Allen Landing, which shows that there's been since 2013 a 49% increase in home values in the city. And that's in Area 522. I know routinely the arguments are that, oh, it's just all the money's going to the lakefront, it's not to the general area of the community. And this report showed that, in fact, everyone's home value is increasing significantly. And I think it's a testament to the people that are involved in leadership in the city in that we are building a phenomenal, high-quality place to live, play, and work, or create, play, and repeat if you want to go with our current slogan. So I'm going to turn it over to Craig here and then maybe wrap up a couple of comments at the end. We've got a short PowerPoint, but I think you'll find it very interesting. So, Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, Don. Good evening, Members of the Council and Madam Clerk. So I was asked by Councilman Stemley to come and give kind of an overview of the annual report that you received from us, I believe, in April. And so instead of going through the document ad nauseam line by line, I put together a PowerPoint that kind of summarizes that, and we'll kind of expand on things as we go. So just to begin, so this is an annual report that's from both the Planning and Inspection Department and the Redevelopment Commission. So there's a lot of overlap between kind of the support that's given from the Planning Department to the Redevelopment Commission. So you'll see that as you go through the presentation. Just briefly, to go over the main functions of the Planning and Inspection Department, we're in charge of current planning and zoning. So then any of the permits that come in with regard to zoning requests, Plan Commission, BZGA, any of those types of work with boards and commissions. Future planning, which includes the recently adopted, the work that went into the recently adopted comprehensive plan, which we'll talk about a little bit more later. And any other special area plans that we do. Obviously, we serve as the staff too, and I'm the Executive Director of the Redevelopment Commission. We also are in charge of building code and permit issuance and inspections, code enforcement, community development block grant program administration, which we'll go into as well later. And then more recently, the administration of the Lead Safe and Healthy Homes Program. So the boards and commissions that we work with on a regular basis, obviously the Redevelopment Commission, we provide staff to the Plan Commission, to the Board of Zoning Appeals, to the Historic Review Board, and we also provide administrative assistance to the Licensing Board, as well as the Tree Board. We work in conjunction with other departments, obviously, when it comes to the Tree Board. Some of the previous accomplishments that we wanted to highlight that weren't included in the report that you received, but just obviously paved the way for some of the things that we're talking about tonight. First one was the Lake Michigan Gateway Implementation Strategy, which was the blueprint for the north end of the community, the improvements we wanted to make on the north end of the community. That was completed in 2014, I'm sorry, 2013. And we have been, since that time, have been diligently working on implementing the strategies that were listed in that document. Second to that was the US 421 South Franklin Street Corridor Plan. I think you can, you'll see from this presentation and some of the work that's happened recently in this, sorry, oh, the other, I'm sorry, didn't realize that wasn't up. Thanks, Andy. Apologize for the bright light in front of everybody. And that has paved the way for a number of the projects that you'll see and hear us talking about on the south end of the city. We have projects going on in all parts of the city and mostly on the north and south ends of the city, but we'll talk about some other areas as well. The Hyatt Palma Study, which was done, which was the Downtown Action Agenda, was kind of the identification of some of the low-hanging fruit that the city could go about in the downtown area to try to make improvements in the community. That was done in 2013. We're all familiar with the Arts Space Uptown Artist Loss. That project has been successful and want to thank other members of the community, especially Councilman Beatry and his efforts in helping us make that become possibility, become reality. The Two-Way Street Conversion Project, a lot of people had wondered how that was going to go, and I think largely, except for the incorporation of some new stop signs that we get a little bit, we get some complaints about, you know, the number of stop signs in the project, that conversion has gone very well and has opened up some different opportunities for the community. The Wild West Street Green Infrastructure Project, which also included a grant in the amount of roughly $240,000 from the EPA as a demonstration project for green infrastructure, as well as reconstruction of that street, and a Lake Michigan Coastal Program Grant that also accompanied that, was completed. And that was about a $3.5 million project when it was all said and done. The Franklin Street Streetscape, over the course of the last several years, we put about a million dollars' worth of investment into the Franklin Street Streetscape. The demolition and clearing projects that we've done, among others, would be the demolition of the former George Marina to open up the views to Trail Creek and the waterfront, as well as some of the demolitions associated with the area that we hope to become Central Plaza. Also, the demolition of a couple of other houses to make way for projects that we wanted to do, projects especially, for example, on the Memorial Hospital site, and then also the former Tillman Trucking Facility, which was in pretty big disrepair on West US Highway 12. We also completed the Branding Master Plan, which paved the way for a lot of the marketing and ultimately was the kickoff for the Civic Plaza, Central Plaza project. We've also enjoyed a number of successful projects using the facade and upper story program projects. We'll talk a little bit more about that in detail. And then finally, the North Point Pavilion, that $3.5 million investment on the lakefront, which has been, which has been an important improvement to Washington Park and paved the way for some additional projects going forward. In terms of accomplishments and progress, projects in progress, the reason we say projects in progress is a number of the projects that the Redevelopment Commission engages in take multiple years to complete. And so as these things become accomplishments, they become, obviously, those things that we've completed in a particular year, but there are a number of projects that we've made headway on that we consider projects in progress, for example. First is the South Shore Double Track Project. The city is very committed to the successful completion of that project, and we are partners in that project. The city is utilizing South TIF funds through some legislation that was included in the overall legislation to make it possible for the state to provide the local match for that project, as well as the other communities along the line, which all partner together to provide the local match. We are providing about 2/3 of the funding from La Porte County to make that possible, so about $12.2 million worth of the project costs ultimately coming from the city of Michigan City. And we will also, we would also receive the lion's share of the investment and benefit from the project as well, so that makes some sense. We anticipate completing that in the form of a combination of bonding a portion of those improvements, as well as cash on hand. So it would be a mixture of both. Along those same lines, in helping make that project a success, we identified along with NICD the opportunity to potentially look at doing a transitory development for the entire, what we call, station block, the area bounded by Franklin Street to the west, Pine Street to the east, 10th Street to the north, and 11th Street to the south. We conducted a development feasibility study. We hired Neighborhood Capital Institute to help us reach out to potential developers to determine the feasibility of an overall mixed-use development on that site. We completed that study last year. We also engaged with NICD in a joint effort to complete basically an initial preliminary design on streetscaping for the project. Some of you may remember when we signed the memorandum of understanding with NICD on the double-track project, we committed to making sure that the project didn't leave a scar on the community from a physical standpoint. And as part of that, we engaged with NICD to put together an estimate of what the initial streetscape concepts could look like for that, to try to soften the visual impact of the project on the community. And so it takes a look at traditional streetscape elements near the station, primarily near the station of decorative elements, pavers and decorative lighting and planters and seating and all that kind of thing. And as you get away further from the station area, that becomes more focused on landscaping and improvements to hopefully soften the impact of the project on the community. So we've completed the initial preliminary design of that with NICD. And we'll be turning that over to NICD so that when they hopefully move into the final engineering phase, we'll hold a public hearing to present that information and ultimately make a decision as to what streetscape elements will be included in the project. And then as part of the legislation that was passed by the state, creating the funding necessary to provide for about half of the funding for the project, the state also provided for what are called, the creation of what are called transit development districts. And those are an effort that's led by the Regional Development Authority to create basically essentially TIF districts in the vicinity of each of the stations. And in Michigan City, there's the potential for there to be two of those. We provided them with some additional, or with some initial ideas of where those might be in Michigan City. And I believe they are anticipating holding the public hearings that the statute requires either yet this summer or this fall, and starting that process to ultimately establish those districts. But at the end of the process, unlike the cities in Lake and Porter Counties, Michigan City would control the funds that would be received from those districts, essentially those TIF districts directly, rather than those decisions being made through the RDA. And the Redevelopment Commission would be in charge of managing those districts. We made some significant progress in terms of the site preparation and utility work necessary to provide for the redevelopment of the former Memorial Hospital project. So we did some substantial stormwater. We removed foundations, removed old utilities, and basically provided a shovel-ready site for development on that project. And we'll talk, we'll talk a little bit more about next steps on that as we go into the goals section of the presentation. You're all familiar with the Ohio Street Reconstruction Project. That construction project is largely complete, except for kind of some last-minute punch list items that we need to complete on the project before we sign off on the final completion. And we'll also talk in the goals section about some additional work we anticipate doing and have all along anticipated doing that was just approved by the Redevelopment Commission tonight for some substantial stormwater improvements in the South Gate Neighborhood, particularly on Village Road and Crestwood Lane. And the Amerplex, Amerplex Project Phase One, you heard, I believe you heard Clarence Hulse when he did the update on the EDC Annual Report, talk about the Haskell Building. And at that time, he had indicated that, and you've also seen the presentations about the new employers that are, that are one of the new employers that's going into that building. At this point, the Haskell Building is, I believe, six or seven of the eight spaces have been leased and are in the process of being developed. So Marbach Engineering is currently building out their space, and Sterin, the company, Sterin, not first manufacturing or company, they're in the process of building out their space, and KTR is already located there. So we're actually, and we'll talk about in the goals section, we're actually talking about the second phase of Amerplex and moving on to the second building. We also built the first, the first section of Amerplex Drive, which is the, used to be an access road that accessed some of the properties off the south side of US 20. But we developed that as an actual road to further service the Amerplex area. We're all familiar, obviously, with discussions about the Central Plaza Project, or Civic Plaza. We haven't decided on a final name for the project yet, but just to give you some idea of where we're at, a number of things have happened with regard to preparations for the project. We've done some, we've done some property acquisitions of 701 through 709 Franklin, as well as the property on the northwest corner of Franklin and 7th. And so a majority of the property acquisitions necessary for the project have been completed. We've also done substantial site preparation and demolition work. Obviously, 701 to 705 was demolished, I believe, last year. And we're currently in the process of demolishing 709 Franklin. And come to find out, as the demolition has started on that building, just how poor a condition that building was in, we actually had to extend the approvals through the Board of Works because of the condition of the building and creating emergency situation to close the sidewalk and parking spaces in front of the building because the facade became unstable and we started to take the historic stonework off the building. We completed a number of different environmental cleanup steps that we needed to, to make the project site shovel-ready for the project. And then we recently wrapped up and are going through the final steps of creating the preliminary design for the project. You can see a rendering of the project in the picture that's on the page there. One of the most exciting things that we are in partnership with the Parks Department, happy to announce, and you may have seen recently in announcements, that Seeing Sands Trail, which the city has been working on Phase One, has been working on since 2003, construction will begin on that this summer. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Construction will begin on that this summer. The project came in within the budget for the estimates that were provided, and we're going to be working on the pre-construction meetings and getting the construction of that going in this summer. So Phase One is underway. We anticipate that being open to the public sometime next year. So we're all very excited about that. We've been working on that project for a long time, multiple phases of funding necessary to make that happen. Phase One will run from the current terminus of the Calumet Trail at the county line along Highway 12 near the South Shore tracks to City Hall. And then plans are for the project letting, as INDOT refers to the bidding process for the, for trail and road projects, to be in November of this year, which would likely mean construction of Phase Two next year, which would run from City Hall and follow the Trail Creek Corridor out to Liberty Trail. And that is, that project is fully funded. The Redevelopment Commission is providing the local match for that. The city provided the local match necessary for Phase One. Redevelopment Commission helped a little bit with that as well. And then Phase Three is currently in the process of being engineered. So engineering and design is taking place on Phase Three. A small portion of the funding for construction has also been acquired for Phase Three, which would take it ultimately in the first part of Phase Three, which we received funding for ultimately to Friendship Gardens, in the vicinity of Friendship Gardens along, and Martin Luther King Drive and Highway 12. So we're very excited about that project finally coming to fruition. In terms of Washington Park, we've completed a number of projects within the last year or so. Among the most substantial would be the West Parking Lot Project, which we partnered with the Port Authority and split the cost of that project with. We believe that that's going to be opening shortly. We're in the process of basically going through the final, the final review of that project and the punch list items that we need to ultimately accept that as complete and then open that to the public as close to, we're hoping as close to the beginning of the season as we can. We completed the restoration of the WPA Greenhouse Project, and we're happy that the public safety departments for the city will use that as a base in the event that they need to have any sort of substantial operations within Washington Park. We also partnered with the city, and thank you to the City Council for helping provide some of the funding through, I believe, Riverboat Dollars, if I'm not mistaken, to complete the Engineers Castle renovation. That project is basically complete at this point and open, and I believe open to the public, if I'm not mistaken. But if you haven't been down there to see that, it's a substantial difference between what the castle looked like before and what it looks like now. And the Redevelopment Commission and Planning Department were happy to be partners in helping make that project possible. We also partnered with the Parks Department by providing the funding necessary to do some substantial ecological restoration on the Bismarck Hill portion of the park, which basically consisted of going in and removing a lot of invasive undergrowth and trees and things like that that were crowding out the native species on the hill to create a better ecosystem for flora and fauna there. But in the process, we also established a series of dog-friendly trails that were open to the public last year as well. We completed some Lot One lighting and siren relocation projects. We relocated the siren, the large siren used by the EMA in the park area to a better location to not be quite as obstructive and as interruptive, I guess, to the people enjoying the park. And we provided some new speaker systems and other improvements as part of that project to enhance the public safety aspects of the park for notifications and safety concerns along the beachfront. And we've begun the initial steps of implementing some of the projects identified in the Washington Park Master Plan as well. More recently, we partnered with the Blue Chip Casino to do a substantial expansion of the Stardust Events Center. I believe that project ultimately ended up being about $13 million of expansion, give or take, $12, $13 million. The Redevelopment Commission provided just about a million dollars' worth of the funding to make that project possible. And we were happy to partner with Blue Chip to further, hopefully, enhance and strengthen them as a partner in our community going forward. We benefit substantially from the Blue Chip being in our community from a financial standpoint. Obviously, we all are familiar with the various ways in which that happens. So anything we can do to help them be successful, we're happy to be involved in. We are also partnering with INDOT to enhance the US 12 Trail Creek Bridge Project. Previously, INDOT had identified the Trail Creek Bridge as a project that they needed to do. It had been through a series of decisions about whether they were going to do some selective repairs on the bridge or a total replacement of the bridge deck. And ultimately, they decided to do a total bridge replacement. That offered an opportunity for the city to make some enhancements, some aesthetic enhancements to the bridge at the same time as the project was going on, and that also resulted in some savings for the city in being able to do that. So that project has been awarded, and construction on that will be in 2020. We also worked with the INDOT to try to minimize the impact on the city from the standpoint of making sure that lanes remain, lanes remain open in both directions when that project is being done and that it be as least disruptive as possible by having it all done in one calendar year, rather than spanning a couple of different calendar years and having more of an impact on the city. We partnered with the city on completing some what we call North TIF District paving projects. Last year specifically, we did the improvements that you see along Center Street, along the edge of Bismarck Hill, which included the repaving of Center Street from Highway 12 up to Felton Street, and the parking, the parking that was installed to assist a couple of our local businesses that are located on Center Street. And we've heard from them that that has resulted in substantial help to them as local businesses. We partnered with both the Chamber of Commerce and also the Michigan City Arts Commission on the purchase of some public art. One was a project commissioned by the Michigan City Arts Commission, I'm sorry, the purchase of a piece that was rented previously from the Michigan City Arts Commission. And that piece was purchased, and then we commissioned, we partnered to commission a piece with the Chamber of Commerce to put a piece of artwork at that important intersection of Highway 12 and Michigan Boulevard. The Redevelopment Commission also partnered with the Main Street Association recently on the Franklin Street Tree Lighting Project, which you probably all had a chance to see, and landscaping. And so we're going to have, in June, will be installed all new landscaping along Franklin Street from 4th Street down to 11th Street. One of the more successful programs the Redevelopment Commission has established is the facade, facade program and the Upper Story Restoration Program. Altogether, that program has resulted in over $1 million of additional investment in the Uptown Arts District area. And the Redevelopment Commission commits to paying about 60% of the cost of that, but the total investments actually exceeded, you know, the typical 40% that would be put in by the property owner. And we provided the necessary funding, we fund up to about, up to 60%, or a maximum of $30,000 per project. dollars per project. And that has resulted in a substantial investment. Most recently, I think we're all familiar with the Leeds Public House, uh, building, the former Ryan Steakhouse Building was one of the most recent investments that was made in that program. And the Upper Story Restoration Program has resulted in about ten new units, ten to fifteen new units, um, of residential, uh, in the upper stories above shops and restaurants in the, um, Uptown Arts District area. Mentioned previously, uh, the Comprehensive Plan. So the Redevelopment Commission partnered with the city and again, thank you to the members of the City Council for providing, uh, half of the funding necessary to, to complete the Momentum Michigan City twenty forty Comprehensive Plan. That plan will help us better provide for opportunities for growth and, and decision-making on how we want to grow in the future, but also will aid us in, um, additional requests for grant funding on projects as we go forward. So that was an important project for us to complete. We partnered with the Northwest Indiana Forum, uh, provide, providing some funding along with many other communities in Northwest Indiana for the Ignite Northwest Indiana, uh, Regional Economic Development Plan. I think I have the right title, right?
Yeah.
Ignite Northwest Indiana. Um, and so, uh, in effort, in an effort to move all the Northwest Indiana communities forward and again, as well as Michigan City. Um, I mentioned the Lake Michigan Gateway Implantation Strategy previously. We continue to focus on the improvement, or the implantation, uh, projects associated with that. We've also been focused on initiating some of the, uh, priority projects that were identified, identified in the US four twenty-one, uh, South Franklin Street Corridor Plan. The Amerplex Project Improvements I talked about earlier are part of that. We've also initiated conversations with INDOT about making pedestrian improvements, which are badly needed along four twenty-one, uh, to the south of US twenty. And, and, uh, we'll talk about that more in goals as we go forward. And then, uh, we were happy to partner with the Michigan City Sanitary District and other departments to, uh, complete an engineering study on the Carwick Park, um, uh, Carwick Nature Park and Cheney Run area. Uh, we're making some substantial improvements and working in partnership with, uh, with JAF, uh, to, uh, provide for a better stormwater, uh, and, uh, stormwater filtration and, and, um, pretreatment situation where the Cheney Run Outfall exists, where it dumps into Trail Creek. We also partnered with the Sanitary District on the, on the development of a, uh, north end storm source, uh, capacity study. That was done in conjunction with some of the requirements for offsetting the, uh, the requirements for stormwater, um, related to the former Memorial Hospital Site. And, um, along with that, we also did some flow metering studies that would allow for an understanding of the, the flows in the entire system in the north end of the city. I believe that study will be starting soon, but we've agreed to pay for a portion of that. Um, you're all familiar, obviously, with the Begley Plume Vapor Intrusion Testing Issue that we've been dealing with for months. Um, the Redevelopment Commission provided the funding for the study and for the testing, or sorry, for the testing that was done. We hope to get reimbursed through, uh, hopefully a negotiation with the Begley Co, with the Begley Company, uh, on that. But we spent about five hundred thousand dollars total so far on the, on the effort to make sure that we keep our residents safe and we understand the situation with regard to that vapor plume. And then, and then, um, finally, in terms of overall accomplishments, the, uh, Planning Department, uh, in particular, was very involved in, along with other departments, including the Sanitary District and others, the EDC, on successfully, um, completing the Southeast Area Annexation, which we're, I think you're all familiar with as well, in the vicinity of Highway twenty and the Swan Lake Cemetery. Just really briefly, just some, just some quick facts. The Plan Commission, um, took in, uh, and processed sixteen petitions and resolutions, and as well as took the necessary actions that they needed to with regard to the approval of the Comprehensive Plan and Lakeshore Regulations. The Board of Zona Appeals, um, completed seventeen actions, which included variances, use variances, special exceptions, et cetera. And the Historic Review Board, uh, reviewed and reviewed and processed fifty-four certificates of appropriateness, um, in the historic districts, in the three historic districts. The Inspection Division, uh, just some additional information that was in the report that I gave you, but just to summarize, uh, we processed just shy of eighteen hundred permits and inspections, uh, which resulted in intake of about, uh, four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in fees that were collected from various permits that were collected. We worked with the IT Department and others, uh, and the Controller's Office and others to, uh, start to convert over to the New World Systems, uh, from, from the BDS Building Department System, um, and switch over necessary for that, which will lead to increased efficiency and the ability to react better to the requests that we receive from our department and better cataloging the information that, um, comes through our office and, and permits and inspections and code enforcement cases and the like. Uh, we completed a number, uh, I'm sorry, we completed, um, twelve demolitions, uh, in two thousand and eighteen. These were either demolitions that were approved in two thousand and seventeen and were put on hold because of some issues with the state of Indiana with regard to requirements for additional, um, asbestos treatment and, or testing, uh, which slowed down the process of completing some of the demolitions in two thousand and seventeen. So those were completed in two thousand and eighteen. And, um, we expect to do more demolitions than we did in two thousand and eighteen, in two thousand and nineteen, uh, especially including some of the, the funding that we receive, uh, that the department receives through the Redevelopment Commission. The Community Development Lot Grant remains a busy office, um, and is getting busier. Uh, last year, the city was awarded six hundred and fifty-six thousand, um, three hundred and seventy dollars by, by HUD, um, for the use in various projects throughout the city. Those included public service projects, which primarily is assistance to existing organizations, um, to, uh, these social service organizations within the community, Catholic Charities, Citizens Concern for the Homeless, Doom Brook, uh, North Central Community Action Agency, Steppingstone Shelter for Women, and Swanson Center. And we have listed there the various ways in which the, the HUD, um, I'm sorry, the CDBG funds were used to assist those. We also have our own owner-assisted home rehabilit, home rehabilitation program called Recap. And there were a number of homes that, uh, rehabilitations were done, uh, done with using those funds. We, we, um, have, we always have on hand emergency home repair funds available and provided, uh, for a number of those repairs last year. We're also focused in conjunction and work closely with the, um, Human Rights Department to, uh, to provide, um, fair housing training and try to encourage fair housing practices in the community. Um, there was a number of, uh, and there were, there was recent, I think, um, we recently held a fair housing, um, workshop. The Eastport Streets Vaping, uh, Resurfacing Program was some money that was set aside in the CDBG funds specifically to make some sidewalk improvements within the Eastport Neighborhood in particular. And then finally, uh, we installed two community gardens, uh, in the Eastport and Westside Neighborhoods, using some of the funds from the Community Development Block Grant Program. So switching over to goals and objectives, um, I mentioned the South Shore Double Track Project again. We anticipate making a decision about moving forward about an actual mixed-use development in the South Shore Transit Block. Along with that would be some, uh, necessary property acquisitions to make that happen, uh, partnering with NICD, uh, to look at developing that block as a mixed-use development that would bring in additional tax dollars to the city, um, rather than it just being a parking garage, as was originally identified in the project. We hope to be able to develop the property further to, and further benefit the city, like I said, mainly from a tax standpoint. Um, we, uh, once given the, I guess, word that the project is moving on to the, you know, to the next step, uh, we intend to perform, to put together a transit-oriented development plan so that we can capitalize as much as we can on available lands in the vicinity of the station. As many of you know, there are a number of underutilized or undeveloped properties, uh, in the vicinity of the, uh, train station, uh, the South Shore Station. And we want to put a plan together so that we can take a look at that quarter to half mile area around the station to make sure that we maximize our investment, uh, around the station. And then-
I believe word is that we're gonna make some decisions by August first.
Uh, yeah, as to whether we do a, right, as to whether we do a, pursue a mixed-use development. Yeah, so- So Don's not on, on microphone, so Andy doesn't know this. Um, so, uh, yeah, we haven't, we need to make a decision on that by August of this year, uh, whether we're going forward with pursuing a mixed-use development on the site or just the, the plan that was already put in place by NICD for, uh, parking structure wrapped with, um, commercial opportunities. And then I talked before about the Transit Development District. The, um, RDA will begin, uh, the process this summer of working with the communities up and down the line and establishing the Transit Development Districts. And, uh, we'll be working with them, uh, on their, on the necessary public hearings that we need to take place for that. What that means to the city, I just want to make sure I highlight, is the ability to do more specifically within the midtown and Eastport Neighborhoods. Um, if the RDA ultimately approves the establishment of a TDD in the Eastport Neighborhood, there'll be a new source of funding available that's no, that's never been available in the Eastport Neighborhood. Um, that's associated, obviously, with the Carolav Station area. So that's just something to keep in mind. Um, and again, additional resources beyond what we've already done and been able to provide in the midtown neighborhood. In terms of the Pine Street and former Memorial Hospital Site Development, you're all gonna pretty quickly hear that the Redevelopment Commission has terminated its, its relationship, uh, with the developer of that site, uh, as of today. So we're going to quickly be going to a, a series of, through a series of meetings to establish a quick request for proposals process with a number of developers. There have been a number of developers that have come to us and expressed interest in developing the site. So we know of several that are already interested and available to develop the site. Uh, we're going to be conducting a quick process to, uh, establish a new developer for the site. So a lot of the work that has been done on the site in the form of the improvements that we talked about earlier, uh, was, was all necessary regardless of when the development occurred. And basically it provides for a shovel-ready site that's basically ready for a developer to walk into and start developing today. So, um, yeah, so, uh, you'll hear more about that in the coming, uh, weeks. Uh, we also intend to reopen the process for seeking a downtown lakefront developer for a hotel, uh, on the north end, um, most likely on the property next door to City Hall. So we'll be looking at and kind of revisiting the process. Um, our negotiations with the, with one of the selected developers on that project, um, did not get completed in the last round. Um, and, um, we hope to open, reopen that process. Uh, the city received as part of a recent round of funding that was made available to communities in Northwest Indiana, specifically there's a pot of money that's available to communities in La Porte County, uh, called Group Two Funds, Group Two Surface Transportation Funds that are, uh, that are, uh, handed out by way of a process through, um, NERCSE, through the Regional Plan Commission. Um, one of the projects that we received funding for was an important one, which is to make some enhancements to Woodland and Pleasant Avenues and to reroute those streets with regard to the railroad crossings in the Eastport Neighborhood. So we're gonna be working with the Eastport Neighborhood to try to minimize the impact of that process, that, that project on the neighborhood. Um, but in, but most importantly, as part of the memorandum of understanding that we signed, that the city signed with NICD, we agreed to someday in the future closing, closing Carol Avenue. And a lot, to allow the, um, uh, Carolav Yard, to allow the NICD and South Shore Yards to expand and bring more jobs to the city. But in order to prepare for that, so that the closure of, ultimate closure of Carol Avenue, uh, crossing, uh, at the South Shore Tracks doesn't, doesn't create a situation where we can't properly provide for access to the neighborhood and to and from the neighborhood, we need to make enhancements to Woodland Ave and Pleasant Avenue, uh, and that one-way pair of streets to try to make at least one, one, some combination of the two of those become a two-way street and improve the railroad crossing situation on both the north end and the south end of those streets within the, within the Eastport Neighborhood. And then, as I mentioned before, the Amerplex, Amerplex at Marquette Project, we intend to engage in this, uh, discussions with the developer, Holiday Properties, on the second phase of development on that. The city has acquired a number of properties in that area to help make that possible and to extend the street. Amerplex Drive, ultimately, our goal is to extend that to Meyer Drive, um, in the vicinity of, of the northeast corner of the Meyer Store and, uh, provide for more access as well as better traffic flow, uh, and opportunities in that area. Um, in terms of the Central Plaza Project, I think some of you participated recently in the workshops, stakeholder workshops that we had. Those were designed to gain, um, some additional input as we near the, the completion of the preliminary design and developing the, uh, detailed, um, operations and maintenance plan for the project. I appreciate the participation of the members of the City Council who participated in those meetings. I think there was a lot of good information exchanged. And hopefully the community is getting a better understanding of the project and some of the realities and, you know, some of the, what, how this thing would really work as opposed to some, you know, perhaps some, uh, uh, assumptions that have been made and things like that. But we're going to be planning on having a, I believe we're planning on having a joint workshop between the Redevelopment Commission and the City Council in June, in mid-June. So you'll be receiving, you'll be receiving word about that. And then our goal would be to ultimately begin the approval process for asking the City Council ultimately for the authority to bond, uh, for the construction of the project. So you'll hear, maybe you'll be hearing more about that soon. Previously talked about Seeing Sands. Um, I just mentioned it as a goal that we continue to work on those, uh, in, in getting, uh, Phase Two to completion and construction, and then continuing to secure additional funding necessary to construct, construct, uh, Phase Three. Uh, in terms of Washington Park, we continue, we, we plan to continue to implement some of the projects that have been identified, identified in the Washington Plan, uh, Washington Park Master Plan. Um, we intend to try to figure out how we're going to go about completing the, uh, Park Entrance Project. Uh, we hope to ultimately, uh, continue the work that we've done on Bismarck Hill, uh, to create an eco-adventure park with potentially, as we mentioned, uh, previously in other presentations, the possibility for zip lines and other eco-adventure opportunities, maybe alpine slides and things like that. Um, and then do some further work in terms of, uh, the lighting project and, and other things that we've done in the Lot One area. With regard to the US Corridor, Forward Corridor and Corridor Plan, um, we, as I mentioned before, we're part, we, we've been in conversations with INDOT and we intend to, uh, along with Hassan Associates, where we're having very, uh, focused discussions, uh, about how to complete pedestrian improvements and streetscaping, more specifically pedestrian improvements along, uh, US four twenty-one, south of, uh, Highway twenty. And we believe we found a solution to provide for sidewalks at least on, at least on one side of the road, um, and hopefully trying to find a way to do that on, on both sides of the road. Uh, and we are also working in conjunction with other entities to complete some wetland projects, uh, in terms of, uh, cleaning up and, um, better utilizing the, the wetland that lies between, um, the Autozone and Von Tobal on the south side of Highway twenty. We, we, the Commission, uh, recently acquired that property. And we hope to, um, reach out to other partners to perhaps take that, take the maintenance and responsibility of maintaining and making that, uh, making that property an asset to the city, uh, more of reality. We intend to partner with the Sanitary District on, continuing to partner with the Sanitary District on brownfield remediation projects and, and identifying, um, opportunities for people to, uh, redevelop brownfield sites that have been identified throughout the city. And the same with the, uh, partnering with the EDC on Opportunity Zone Projects throughout the city. We're happy to recently have received approval for three of our census tracks becoming, um, part of the Opportunity Zones that have been identified by, by the state of Indiana, um, as an additional tool available to us for development. Obviously, people are very interested in what's gonna happen with the NIPSCO, uh, Michigan City Generating Station. The city has already been in discussions, uh, preliminary discussions with NIPSCO about potential opportunities to reuse that site and to begin the process of looking at cleaning up that site. So we're definitely gonna be very focused on continuing those conversations, ultimately arriving at, hopefully a solution that's in the best interest and will be the best for Michigan City. The same goes for the St. Anthony Hospital Site. Um, we've been having discussions with Franciscan about the different opportunities that exist with regard to the reuse of the St. Anthony Site. Most likely what will happen is portions of the building will likely be torn down, but there are significant portions that are still viable, uh, as well as the parking structure that's available makes it a very viable site for some reuse. And various, uh, possibilities that have been considered would be medical, additional medical uses, uh, senior living opportunities, perhaps some other housing opportunities. The parking lot is a very large area itself, could potentially be a site for a new use, um, perhaps some additional housing for the community, um, and, and some of those opportunities. Uh, we would also like to partner with, uh, the City Council on conducting a comprehensive citywide housing study. We're hearing from a number of sources, including the EDC, that we need to take a strong look at the housing that we provide in the city, whether it's the condition of the existing housing and opportunities that we can work on, creating programs to help assist homeowners with redevelopment, with, um, reinvesting in those properties. But we're also aware of some gaps that exist in our community in terms of housing that we need to provide, uh, for, uh, for various segments, whether it's, um, uh, whether it's, you know, middle-range, um, housing that we are seriously lacking in the community or other opportunities that we identify. But we'd like to work with the City Council, uh, yet this year to hopefully provide the funding necessary, uh, to complete that study. We remain continuously in contact with the owners of Marquette Mall. Um, the Marquette Mall continues to be a challenge. The owner of the mall has not been very forthcoming in terms of working with the city. Uh, the city has a number of times, uh, offered opportunities for investment, uh, to help either tear down buildings, uh, or tear down portions of the building to make the site more viable for redevelopment. Um, and, uh, we hope to work with, uh, the Sears, um, uh, Sears Land Holdings or Sears Holding Corporation, uh, the entity that, that owns the Sears portion of the site. Some of you may know that Sears owns its own parcel. And, uh, so what's happening is Cable and Hardware has bought a portion of the western end of the, of the mall property. And we intend to hopefully work with them to help make some of those opportunities more feasible for redevelopment, uh, to focus on working with Sears, to identify opportunities for the Sears site, and then continue to work with the owner of the mall. Um, unfortunately, the, the owner of the mall seems to have, uh, decided to use the mall as a, as a tax shelter or a tax write-off. And that presents some challenges. And communities across the United States are struggling with mall owners in the same regard. And- across the United States are struggling with mall owners in the same regard and we'll just continue to try to work with that developer, or that, I'm sorry, that owner to, to redevelop the site. We also identified some other priority projects, redevelopment projects through the 421 corridor study that we continue to work on. We, we are working with the sanitary district and other departments on the Cheney Run Wetland Stormwater Project and the Carrwick Nature Center Projects. We have specific TIF funds from the Northeast TIF that is associated with the GAF project that was done years ago. We're just, we're very close to paying off the, not we are, but GAF is very close to paying off its bonds for the expansion project that they did. And soon that will result in a larger number of funds being available to the city to do some substantial projects in that area. And so we'll partner with the sanitary district to determine what those are. We hope to work with the Army Corps of Engineers to reevaluate and reapproach, along with our consultants, to hopefully reapproach, approach the possibility of extending Town Center Drive from the Menards where it terminates currently by Menards down to the Walmart Access Drive. One of the more important things that I think we need to focus on in the next year or two is revisiting and focusing on the midtown and eastport plans that were, that were passed by the city and seeing where we're at, reevaluating those plans. There's been some work done on the eastport plan, but it's a little bit unclear where we stand with regard to the efforts to implement the midtown plan. And so we hope to partner with various agencies, council members, et cetera, to make revisiting those plans a priority going forward. And then we'd like to explore, we've talked about for a number of years and it's a difficult thing to establish, but we would like to explore the establishment of a small business incentive program to try to encourage some of the vacant spaces in the, in the buildings, in the, in the Uptown Arts District and midtown areas in particular, where there's a lot of, a lot of available properties to try to encourage small businesses to come into those. More recently, the redevelopment commission was very happy to, and to partner with Fluid Coffee to come into a space and provide for production as well as a coffee, a coffee house and production, a craft coffee house and production facility in the Eagles Building, right? Yeah, in the Eagles Building. And then finally, just real quick, the inspection division of our department. We want to complete the New World Systems, I'm sorry, thanks. It's hard because usually I don't have to worry about not seeing my screen. I can't see my screen, I have to rely on that. Complete the New World Systems conversion and implementation. We'll do additional demolitions with city and redevelopment commission funds. We hope to increase the number of those, given the condition of a number of the properties in the city. And we want to focus on active targeted code enforcement in corridors and special areas. We're also considering the establishment of a dirty dozen list of properties to pursue. For example, we have some recently available additional legal funds available to us, thanks to the council and the approval of the attorney's budget, providing for some additional legal assistance. That was targeted specifically for code enforcement, as you all know, and we hope to work with the additional resources that we have available there. We've been working with Attorney, the Page-Stallbrink on that and others. And then finally, the new computer system will allow us to better track code enforcement and vacant and abandoned housing, building cases as they come up. And so we're hoping to be able to respond better to the requests we receive and more efficiently track the, track the activity that we have in, with regard to code enforcement and other vacant and abandoned building issues that have, that come from the city. So with that, I want to thank you for the opportunity to give you this overview tonight. Don and I are here and available for questions that you have. You also recently received a couple of other reports from us and we're happy to answer your questions about those as well.
Well, thank you Craig. I, I don't know if it's exhausting for everyone here, it was certainly exhausting for me. I got tired just watching the slides. But I appreciate your patience and I appreciate Craig's hard work in putting together a very comprehensive plan and report on all the great things going on around here. That billion dollars of investment that I mentioned here earlier doesn't come all by itself and I think you got a big dose of the amount of work that it takes to continue to foster that kind of investment from outside. And we have our map here that is routinely in Clarence Holst's project to show that it's not just the downtown area that's benefiting from the investments. The downtown investments complement the investments in other places and when people come to our community, they want to see, is this a phenomenal place to stay, live, work, and is there a lot of community pride? And I think we continue to develop that together. The one piece that I forgot to help you with on here is I anticipate that we will get another request from the Michigan City Area Schools to support with their technology grant and I'm pretty confident that the redevelopment commission will certainly be receptive to that request, just to remind people that I, I know the redevelopment commission put in a million dollars first year and now I want to say $600,000 a year for the next four years. So $3.4 million to help our young people in this community have tablets. And I know the city council had a very similar number in terms of their support for the Michigan City Area Schools and I think it's substantially paying off. So not to take up any more time, it was an exhaustive list, but I, I do appreciate you bearing with that and listening to all the good things that are going on. So we're more than happy to answer questions or maybe we need another workshop or whatever you suggest to go through something to, I know that, I, I'm watching the, the reactions from the council, I was like, how much can you take, right? So, thank you.
Councilman Fitzpatrick, I think you have a comment or?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Thanks for the presentation, it was very informative. The Village, Village Road and Crestwood Drive, what is the, what are the plans for the?
Sure, so the sanitary district came to us at the very beginning of the process for getting the, the bonding approval for the Ohio Street project. And as you know, we increased the original, the original intent was just to do the Ohio Street project with the bond funds that we received and we were, we were approached by the sanitary district to increase that, to allow for these projects to be done. So what it consists of basically is some stormwater improvements to allow for better capacity for stormwater in that neighborhood, especially focusing on the backyard flooding that's occurring along the backyards of Crestwood Drive and Ohio Street and Village Road. In addition to that, whatever's left over from the funding, there's about a million and a half dollars of funding left in the bond capacity, we believe. We just approved $950,000 tonight for the specific stormwater project of that 1.5 million. And what's, what's left over remaining will be used to make pavement and other necessary repairs to Village Road. As you're where we did Lurkspur Lane previously, we intend to hopefully make it so that that entire, that road was intended to be, that's intended to be a pass-through, you know, from a, from the standpoint of it's the major road in that area and we want to make sure that that road's in good, in good a condition as we can get it. So that's what we intend to do with the remaining funds.
Okay, great. Did you have a timeframe on when?
We just approved the, we just approved the $950,000 tonight and I, so I believe they're going to get to work on the bidding process. We would anticipate that, those improvements happening yet this summer. So, are starting yet this summer.
Okay, great. And then there was the recap funds and emergency home repairs stuff. Where can people get information on?
They would contact, they would contact Sherry Wilson in our office and she manages those projects. So she has applications available for the recap program as well as, now the, the emergency home repairs are on a case-by-case basis as they occur. Someone comes to her and says, you know, in the middle of the winter or something like that and, you know, my heating's gone out or there are certain qualifications need to be met for an individual to take advantage of those programs, but they would contact Sherry Wilson.
Okay, and there was just one more thing. The comprehensive 2040 plan, that's available online, right? Is that on the?
Yes, um, now it is available online through the consultant, but I'm working, I'm working with our webmaster on making sure that it's available directly on the city website. So the, the link doesn't become broken. So I'm working on getting the file transfers done for a few projects actually, including that one.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Craig, rough idea, I'm not going to hold you to this. Any idea when the New World System will be up and the council can have our read-only to where we can see the violations so that way there we?
That's a good question and that's part of what the, why it's a goal. We haven't accomplished that fully yet. Um, you know, I, I would, I would have to reach out to Sue. Sue's been the one working most directly with New World Systems on the conversion. So I can have Sue get back to you and let you know what she thinks in terms of a timeline on that.
Yeah, because when we talked last time, you were thinking?
Hopefully yet this year. I mean, that's our goal.
Yeah, you were thinking January.
I know.
And now we're six months in and we're.
Well, and we're working with other, other departments, obviously. We're working in conjunction with the IT department and the, and the controller's office on the, on the rollout of the new system. And so some elements have been incorporated into the city faster than others. Obviously the financial system was most important and that was put up first and then followed by that was the, was the community development module, which is, they're in the process of implementing right now. Thank you.
Councilman Dabney?
Quick question in regards to the double track and you read the, in the newspaper they're talking about the, the big change in the board. Do we anticipate or expect any changes because of this?
We, we hope to have a seat on the board. I know that the mayor has been directly in conversation, you know, with the governor's office and others to ensure that Michigan City, we're, we're one of the biggest, A, contributors and benefactors hopefully of that project. We hope to have a seat on the board.
I anticipate that we'll hear from that in the next month or so. It's really the governor.
It's up to the governor, yeah.
And his staffs call on, on what they're doing. I, I agree with Craig though specifically, the city put in two-thirds of the money for the track. We have, the most impact will be here.
The local match for La Porte County.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And the governor, the good part is the governor just re-upped for another $200 million. So it shows the state commitment for Northwest Indiana, which we didn't always have. So I think it was a great example of communities coming together around a project that's really going to have many, many billions of dollars of benefit to Northwest Indiana for years to come. So I'm, I'm just glad with Craig's leadership, we're a little ahead, we're a little bit ahead. In fact, other communities refer to us as knowing what we're doing with our station block and having some level of plan there so we could actually make a decision rather than two months trying to pull out the drawing board and flip something together. So, um, on that, I mean, so the other piece tonight that, I don't know if you're going to try to go into an hour till we have an expert here with us, but I know there's questions relative to cash flow and our bonding analysis and that, but I'm seeing some fatigue from people here, whether we want to try to do anything with that or not, but there will be coming to you here over the course of the next year or two, or a request for one, two, maybe three bonding projects where we'll use Rita One Commission funds or anticipated Rita One Commission funds to do bigger projects. And I also expect that we may get one or two private investments that might be similar to the GAF project where the developer takes the risk relative to the bonding. And we just agree that in fact, we will allow them to use some of the TIF funds that are generated from their own project to pay off their own bond. So we've had a good success with GAF. As Craig mentioned, we'll probably end up with a couple hundred thousand dollars or so more in the Northeast TIF in the next year or two that could be dedicated to either environmental projects or improvements in that area, whatever's been allowed, so.
Councilwoman Carnes?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to thank Redevelopment Commission and Planning Department for their leadership on this, in art, safety, infrastructure, the environment. I, I knew about all these projects, but the same mall like assembled here at once was, was really impressive. Would like to know what's going on with Waste Inc.
Okay, I'm sure. So the biggest thing involving Waste Inc. right now is Singing Sands Trail Phase Two. What's going on is we are finalizing a process with the EPA and IDEM on basically hopefully, hopefully modifying the, uh, the right term, I can't think of the term of the agreement. We have an agreement with the EPA and IDEM on how we can use that property and the public access to that property. It's been our goal, I think, for a number of years to open that property up for reuse, recreational reuse. And one of the easiest ways to do that would be to allow for trails and pathways and that sort of thing, maybe a path around the site. But the, part of the Singing Sands Trail Phase Two project is expected to go along Trail Creek on the southern end of the property. But what that's allowed us to do is it's allowed us to revisit that agreement and, and open that up to make it easier for us to do additional things in the future as well and have easier conversations with the EPA and IDEM to continue to do more with that property.
And I know you've done a lot of work on the WPA Greenhouse project and the Rotary Castle. I was wondering if there's any plans for the tower?
We'll have to discuss, there's been a lot of discussion about the tower, the Monkey Island. There are different, you know, different opinions on how that money should be used and different interests that have had, you know, kind of conversations with I think council members and the mayor. Ultimately, you know, the conversation needs to be had with the mayor, which way, which direction we go with that. I mean, we identified that we would like to, you know, participate in, you know, those projects in the future as resources allowed, so.
It's making it case-by-case.
Yeah.
We've seen some significant positive community response by both the projects. I think, you know, I, I for one, for years was always wondered about the greenhouse and my mom would bring me here to tell me and that's how far that goes. Wow, it's not a cool building, everything ever happens. So Councilwoman Carnes and Larry Silvestri, when he was on the commission, were certainly big champions of that, but that was not a small bill to re-up. But I believe it's a new gem in the city and will contribute to people thinking these guys have got their act together, so.
Thank you.
Councilman Beatry?
I'd like to thank you as well for an exhaustive, thorough report on everything you do and we, we certainly appreciate what you do and the, the role you played in the success Michigan City's had over the last eight to 10 years. And specifically in regard to the failed project to get a, initial failure to get a project, a hotel here in the north end and the Pine Street, Spring Street, Memorial Hospital project that you say has already terminated today. Have we learned anything specifically that would give us hope that we'll be more successful on the second go-round?
Indeed. Most specifically is just to, to make sure that the developer's absolutely clear and committed to what their participation in the project is on the front end of a project before we pull the trigger on any agreements or any, even any memorandum of understanding with regard to that project. As many of you know, we've been talking about the Memorial Hospital project for years. It was one of the first things that I inherited when I came on board in 2012. And we've been, obviously it took us up until about 2017 to actually create the initial agreement with that project. We've learned a lot from that. At the end of the day though, redevelopment is tough and it's possible for developers to pull out at the last minute. In that case, we had agreements and we fulfilled our end of the agreements, the developer wasn't able to do so on their side. But what we've done, the work that we've done has positioned us to, you know, to bring in the developer to that site relatively easily, especially with regard to the Memorial Hospital site. On the hot, on the hotels, on the hotel project, we were going down the road of pursuing a development agreement with a chosen developer and the, I'll just be honest, the developer pulled a substantial amount of the money that they were going to contribute to the project out of the project, which made that project unfeasible. And we said, well, we're not, we're not willing to double the cost that we were investing in this project, literally. And so we're revisiting that and looking to reopen that process soon and look at different opportunities.
I think the balance is in community funds versus private investment and how that's negotiated to where you really get a good outcome. Now, if we go back to the Pine Street project, is there's any number of rumors out there relative to us giving the developer money? I'm, there's, the developer hasn't got any money from the redevelopment. All the monies went into the site and our own personal planning effort. And in fact, the developer himself is out a significant amount of money in the planning, the blueprints and the other stuff that provided tonight. Even this evening, he came to our redevelopment, he wasn't really happy that we terminated the agreement. The reason we terminated it was because of a number of representations to us, or maybe a better term is misrepresentations to us along the way. So we firmly back here in January this year, we had a good agreement with them back in 2017, got frustrated over the last year relative to the progress on the developer's side of the project. And we put a date certain, you got to have these things in place and that was March 31st. Had some time to remedy and that time's gone. So we're, you know, we're, we're changing horses. And on the positive side about that, both projects, because of the good thing going on around here, is there was a time when it was hard to have an outside developer want to take any risk on the city. And now on that project in particular, we know that we have four or five developers that are very interested in picking up where they left off. So to your point, we will put in place a very tight contract with high expectations to get the thing moving, so.
Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, the Woodland Avenue, Pleasant Ave, Railroad Cross, we talked about this before. You don't have to go into detail, but could you send me an email telling me like where we are in that project?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I can kind of summarize right now a little bit.
Oh, go ahead.
So basically what we're looking at doing in a nutshell is turning, hopefully turning Woodland Avenue two-way south of the Southshore tracks, then at the tracks switching over using one of the two sections of Holiday to, to go east to Pleasant Avenue and then turn. And then turn Pleasant Avenue north of that set of tracks two-way up to Springland Avenue. We're trying to do this in a way that's the least invasive to the neighborhood. That's what provides the safety and the traffic flow that we need. Because as it stands, the current one-way situation is not going to be adequate if Coral Ave closes. Because there's going to be more pressure put on Woodland Avenue to get to and from the station, for example, from the north. And so, but we want to work with the neighborhood to understand, obviously, we want to provide for parking opportunities and, you know, things like that. But the idea is to try to identify a path that makes the, you know, that has the least impact, but still accomplishes what we need to with that project, so.
I think I interpreted that wrong. I was thinking all the way from the Boulevard.
Originally, that was the plan. But when you, sometimes when you do, well, okay, sometimes beacons run. Sometimes the beacon system for the county is wrong. It said we owned some property, we thought we did and we don't. We did title work and obviously when we do our due diligence, we find out sometimes that there's not information that we did, you know, there was information we weren't aware of. And we had thought that the portion of the property, portion of Woodland Ave to the north of the north set of tracks, the rail spur, was owned by the city and it turns out it was vacated by the city. And so that caused us to reinvestigate the options. And so that's what we're going to have to look at. But basically, that would still function a lot better than what I talked, what I just talked about would function a lot better than the one-way pair that's there now.
Okay, well, I'll email you tomorrow and I can get some just real good detail about it.
Yeah, I want to try to get a better idea specifically about when the funding is going to be available for that project. We just, they, I think NERC just approved officially approved that last Thursday. It had to go through a number of steps, but the final was the final, was the full commission meeting last Thursday, I believe it was. Was it that or Thursday prior? But I, and I didn't want to make any really big statements about it until they did approve the funding, but they have. So we'll find out exactly when that is and what we have to do between now and then.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. I do have a few comments or or questions. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Phillips, very good, very detailed, good information. As far as any financial questions, I don't think the council wants to get into financing this evening.
Let me offer this, we're having a meeting specifically with overlapping taxing units that's required by state statute on June 10th. Where we're inviting, you know, the schools, the townships, the county officials, et cetera, in to basically give the same presentation we gave to the Redevelopment Commission at our last month's meeting. I would invite the council members to attend that. And our our consultants from now Baker Tilly was on, now Baker Tilly will be on hand if there are specific questions you have about the finances at that time.
And and what I'll do is I will talk to Councilman Stimley, since he's the liaison to the Redevelopment Commission. And I'll let him set up that meeting, whether chat meeting or, you know, workshop with the Redevelopment.
If we can start with that, that would be best because they're going to be on hand anyway. And then if after that you still have questions, obviously, we can go further with that.
Okay, I'll let the I'll let the councilman.
So I'll make sure that we send the invitation to the clerk and we get the word out to you about the June 10th meeting.
Sure, thank you.
But it's going to be June 10th at 6:00 PM, I believe. Just the early part of the Redevelopment Commission meeting on June 10th, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you on that. A couple of questions. And I'm glad to see that the Redevelopment Commission or the City Planning Department is taking a closer look at the midtown area. I think that came up during the last election, it probably should have came up a lot earlier than that. But I think that that area has been denied a lot of services and a lot of help from the city. And next time with the, how are you planning on doing this, Mr. Phillips? Is I know that Councilwoman Silva's was involved with it. But from my viewpoint, it looked to me like Councilwoman Silva's was given like the task or a lot of the work to try to make this thing happen. I think when you get ready to do this, they have a consultant go out and talk to the business people. I mean, it's it's, one thing is being a council person, the other thing is tasking a council person. Well, if you want it done, you go out and talk to all the merchants on Franklin Street. And personally, I don't think that that's fair. So I think next go around, let's do it a little better, more convenient.
Well, it was just, that was the model that was offered by that agency. And it was kind of hard to modify that because that was a program they offered. And yes, I hear what you're saying.
And I think it'll get it done.
Obviously, we've done, we've done a good job with that through other projects. Obviously, for example, our work with Stan Hope Consulting, we've done really good with outreach. So, okay, no problem.
Okay, appreciate that. And then I know we've done a lot of work down in Washington Park and it's all beautiful stuff. One thing I was wondering, can TIF money, redevelopment TIF money be used for playground equipment in the park?
Possibly new playground equipment.
Yes, brand new.
Possibly, and we haven't, we did, we did identify through the Washington Park Master Plan wanting to improve and upgrade the equipment in in the park.
And and let me, let me tell you why I bring this point up. I talked to the park department, they say, yeah, it's it's in our plans, you know, to get this done. But, you know, we're we're getting the greenhouse done, we're building the North Point Pavilion. We're looking, we're getting a elephant house done or lion's house, whatever it was.
What is it, the Monkey Island?
The monkey, well, we're talking about Monkey Island right now. But what my point is, is we're looking at these projects like that versus taking care of the playground equipment for children to use. It's not ADA accessible, it is not compliant with, you know, whatever the safety regulations are now for playground equipment. I mean, there are swing sets that are out there that I probably swing on when I was a child. I mean, they were great, they're still, no, I would still swing on them, but they're not, they're not up to standards to where they should be. And I don't know why the city cannot invest on taking care of our main park, our main playground in Michigan City and invest the money. But we'll invest 900 mil, we'll invest $900,000 into a greenhouse that right now is empty and it's not being utilized. So I wish you Redevelopment Commission would look into that, reach out to the park department. And if we can do that, let's get it done and get new playground equipment instead of waiting two more years.
We can look into, we need to talk to our, we need to talk to our legal advisors too to find out what we can and can't do. But we would have to look into that and find out if that's feasible or not.
And I'd appreciate if you'd give me a response back on that, Mr. Phillips. It doesn't have to be tomorrow, but just give me a response.
I mean, I know it's something we probably wouldn't be able to do this year because I think most of our projects have been pretty set for this year. But we can look into it.
Well, certainly, I think order of importance consideration that particularly what I did like about the Rotary Castle was, and also the Michigan City Area Schools one, was some sharing of expense. So if, because I think it shows commitments from all departments and not necessarily that the Rita One Commission asked for funding for everything. One of the things that we have to justify, and we have justified so far in our investments in Washington Park is that they're going to help drive the economy of the city. So it's a little easier when I, when I, when we invest in something like the the Meriflex building, where we get Marbach coming in and they're high paying jobs than it is to, hey, our children should be well taken care of and safe in the park. So I'm, I'm all about safety in kids. I I have a two and a half year old grandson. I want him to come up here and be safe in the park and enjoy the new equipment, so. Just kind of.
Okay. And a couple of other comments, and I know Craig, you brought up this group two funding from NERC. And can the city apply for that money in this respect for bus stop shelters?
Okay, so, yes and no.
And if they can, who could lead that?
The way this works is every few years, every couple of years, NERC, you know, Regional Plan Commission puts out a call for projects for communities. And there are certain categories that they cert, they set certain dollar amounts that communities can apply for that funding. So I know that first and foremost, the transit funding that we receive is for primarily for operations and maintenance of our existing system, because I know we rely heavily on NERC funds to operate the the Michigan City Transit System. I believe there is a pot of money that becomes available from time to time that's specifically for bus stops. The last time I can remember, it's been a number of years since that became available. But when that becomes available, yes, Michigan City can apply for it. But so the answer is potentially, but it's a question of we apply for operations funds first. And then if there's additional pots of money available for other transit related projects, we can apply for those funds. But I know that Robin specifically sets on the Transportation Policy Committee as a representative for the city. So she's very aware of when those opportunities become available. And I'm also involved on the Transportation Resource Oversight Committee, which is where the monies actually get doled out at the local, our decisions are made what to approach the full commission on. And so we definitely become aware of those opportunities when they come.
So I should talk to.
Robin, and I'll keep my eyes open as well.
All right. Uh, let's see, I believe that's all the questions that I have again. Thank you for the presentation, job well done.
All right, thank you.
And keep up the fantastic work.
All right, thanks.
All right, you're welcome, you're welcome. Oh, okay, yeah, I was just waiting. Okay, I thought maybe you were coming up to the microphone, I didn't know for sure. All right, well, moving on, we're on to the claims docket. And under Fund 2042, which is the Riverboat Claims of $87,551.47. And under Fund 2031, which is the Boy Development, it's $1,159.81. And no funds are going at this time to the ESG savings project. With that being said, is there a motion to pay the claims?
Motion to pay claims.
Motion by Councilman Beatty and seconded by Councilman Dabney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, claims will be paid. Ms. Nyalib, are there any petitions before us this evening?
There are no petitions.
Any communications before us this evening?
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on May 6th and also on the 13th from DLZ Weekly Activities Report for ESG Energy Project. Correspondence was also received in the clerk's office on May 14th from Corporate Counsel Amber LaPage amending section 70-102B4 and chapter 70 of the Michigan City Municipal Code.
Thank you, Ms. Nyalib. And also, I'll bring this up under Communications. I know every, all the council members were given another 2019 council committee assignments. And what we did is we put the revolving loan fund committee liaison on there. And myself being the liaison this year, we meet as needed. Clarence Halsey calls the meetings and when he calls the meetings, that's when we meet. So I just wanted to get that on the committee assignments sheet. Moving along, our first resolution this evening, Ms. Nyalib, by title only without objection?
A resolution by title only directing the Michigan City Planning and Inspection Department to waive building permits and inspection fees for the energy savings project. And this is introduced by Mr. Prozwalinski.
Thank you, Ms. Nyalib. My comments are, all the council members are aware that ESG is working for us under our direction. And by basically having them pay us fee, building fees is we are just, you know, it's a revolving door with the money. And it's basically, we're paying for it and then they're paying us back. And also, it's the work that's necessary to do the the permits, which is unnecessary. So it's just work that's being done for the city by ESG. And that's why I introduce this. That being said, is anyone from the audience that wishes to speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Any council comments on this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Councilman Hamilton?
Motion to approve.
Okay, okay.
Sure.
Is that Councilwoman Carnes? Okay, there is a motion by Councilman Hamilton and seconded by Councilwoman Carnes. Again, are there any council comments? Having none, Ms. Nyalib on the vote?
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Beatty?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Ms. Carnes?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Sorry.
And Mr. Prozwalinski?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyalib. Our next resolution by title only without objection?
A resolution by title only approving the statement of benefits SB 1 PP for the assessment valuation deduction, tax abatement for certain personal property owned by Michigan City Paper Box Company within Michigan City, Indiana. And that's introduced by Ms. Carnes and Mr. Beatty.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Councilman Beatty?
Yeah, the the business that we're talking about this evening is is a business that everyone should know about because it's the oldest business in Michigan City. In fact, it's probably one of the oldest in Indiana. Michigan City Paper Box has been here for 115 years, under the Hoodwin family since it was founded. Al Hoodwin, who's got to be a grandfather, started it. But Fred Hoodwin and Lou Hoodwin, a lot of us know, both of them very prominent Michigan City residents and very active in civic organizations. Of course, now son Al runs the company very well. They're looking for a five-year abatement. They've had abatements with Michigan City before. They've always met their obligations, responsibilities. This is an abatement that will allow us to keep in production of various employees. The amount of savings is listed on the application, I'm sure you've all seen it. And I know many of the council people are interested in knowing whether or not the employees are covered by benefits. They are. They receive 401K profit sharing, match, health, life and disability insurance, as well as paid holidays and vacation. So I can think of no reason why we shouldn't support it and every reason why we should. I would hope that everyone else will agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Beatty. Anyone from the public and Attorney Novak is here this evening?
I'm here on behalf of Michigan City Paper Box, but certainly, Mr. Beatty gave a great introduction that I don't need to reiterate. We do have previously asked for abatements, which you guys have graciously given to us 2011, 2015, 2017, and also 2016, as Mr. Beatty had indicated, all in substantial compliance with all of our projections. This one here is for approximately just under $500,000 for manufacturing equipment coming in from New York, which should hopefully be installed in late June or July. So we would be asking for your approval to approve this five-year tax abatement. And certainly, Al Hoodwin is here for any questions you may have, as is Clarence Hulse.
Are there any questions from the council of Attorney Novak or any of the representatives here from Michigan City Paper Box Company? Okay, thank you, Mr. Novak. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Any council comments on this resolution? Councilman Hamilton?
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion by Councilman Hamilton to approve and support by Councilman Beatty. Are there any other council comments? Having none, Ms. Nyalib on the vote?
Mr. Beatty?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Ms. Carnes?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Prozwalinski?
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
We have seven favorite and no one opposed.
Congratulations, thank you very much. You're a great partner in Michigan City. And Ms. Nyalib, our first ordinance on first reading this evening by title only without objection?
An ordinance on first reading by title only approving additional appropriation of the local option income tax Lloyd Fund to provide funding for the maintenance and repair of streets and sidewalks. And this is introduced by Mr. Beatty.
And does the sponsor have anything he'd like to add at this time?
Just briefly, this is not something new. This is something we we've done fairly recently over the last few years. There's additional $1 million available through the Lloyd Funds, not Riverboat Funds. And the mayor and the city engineer and other department heads have run their tests of the the streets in Michigan City to look, to identify those that are most in need and identified a million dollars worth of repairs that we could do. And I'm in favor of any money we can spend to make our streets better.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Uh, is there any council comment? Any council comment on this ordinance? Any council comment? Uh, having none, I am going to refer this ordinance to the Finance Committee. And Mr. Dabney will be setting up a meeting at that time. And at that time, I'd also like to have the, uh, city engineer there and anyone else with information on what roads, sidewalks, things like that are going to be, uh, paved or installed this summer, any amounts that we're looking at spending on that. So the council can review that also. Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on, our next ordinance on first reading, Ms. Nyalib, by title only without objection?
An ordinance on first reading by title only amending section seventy dash one oh two B four and chapter seventy of the Michigan City Municipal Code, commonly known as Promotions to Rank with the Michigan City Police Department. And this is introduced by Mr. Hamilton and Mr. Simmons.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time?
I'd like to make a motion to table this indefinitely.
Support. There's been a motion to table indefinitely and seconded by, by Councilman Hamilton and seconded by Councilman Simmons. Uh, this, uh, ordinance will be tabled indefinitely and.
Yep, check the vote.
Okay, we will vote on it. Uh, Ms. Nyalib on the vote, please?
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Ms. Carnes?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Prozwalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
And Mr. Beatty?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Ms. Nyalib. And, uh, what, what I, the plans are for this ordinance are to have it come before the Labor, uh, Negotiating, uh, Committee. And we will set up, I'm the chairman of that, and we will set that meeting up appropriately and, uh, sit down with the police department and the city attorney. Uh, so everyone knows exactly where we're going with this and what benefits it'll have for the city. Ms. Nyalib, our next ordinance on second reading now without, uh, objection by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Riverboat Fund to provide funding for one hot box for pavement patching for Michigan City Central Services. And this is introduced by Ms. Carnes.
And does the author have anything she'd like to add at this time? And it will be formal, uh, formal public hearing, uh, this evening on this ordinance. Uh, formal public hearing is now open. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone here from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone here from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Uh, formal public hearing is now closed. I do have, uh, a question, uh, and Ms. Carnes, I don't, I don't know if you can answer this or not. But I know that right now there's one hot box that I see going around town and patching up, uh, potholes. Uh, i- if we get a second hot box, then are we going to look at hiring two additional people in the street department to, to operate this? Uh, because I would think in order to operate a second hot box, now they have two hot boxes going at one time in the summer. Now you're gonna have to pull people from other jobs to put on this job. So is that gonna shorten or short the street department from doing their normal operations? I don't know, but that's kind of, that's a concern for me. If we're gonna take two people from here and put them over there, what's gonna be getting done over there? I mean, right now the street department only has, I believe, fourteen people. And we never did hire people back after we had to cut it after when we got into the tax, uh, situation a few years back. So that's a, that's a concern of mine. Uh, and I don't know if you can answer that or not, Mrs. Carnes or Ms. Carnes, probably not.
I can get back to you with that.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to our, well, there was only one ordinance tonight on second reading. Okay, our first ordinance on third reading this evening, Ms. Nyalib, uh, by title only without objection, please?
An ordinance on third reading by title only creating Article three and chapter fifty-eight entitled Smoke-Free City-Owned Parks and Playgrounds. And this is also introduced by Ms. Carnes.
And does the author have anything that she would like to add at this time? Okay, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public, please state your name and address?
My name is Sarah Knoll, four twenty-two Franklin Street, S W E, Michigan City, Indiana. I recently completed my master's degree in public health, and I'm happy to be back in the communities that I grew up in. Um, I have a passion for public health and here in Michigan City especially. I represent healthy communities of Laporte County as the Tobacco Program Coordinator. I would like to commend the council and Councilwoman Carnes for addressing secondhand smoke exposure in our outdoor spaces. I support smoke-free parks, but I caution the exemption of the golf course. We encourage young people to engage in healthy and fun activities, like going to the park or playing a round of golf with a buddy. Do we really want to be modeling tobacco use along with this activity? Cigars and golfing don't have to go hand in hand. I appreciate, and I appreciate the acknowledgement of the negative impacts that secondhand smoke exposure in our outdoor spaces can have on our health. Perhaps more importantly, some of our city's hardest workers are exposed to over seventy different cancer-causing chemicals every day in their workplace. Secondhand smoke still claims the lives of over forty thousand people in the U.S. every single year. It is my hope to work with the council on comprehensive smoke-free air protections, both indoors and outdoors for everyone who works, plays, and lives in Michigan City. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Deborah Chad, uh, Michigan City Area Schools Board of Trustees. Uh, we prohibit smoking on all school property. And we do that because we don't think children should see parents and adults modeling smoking. And so they take that up as a habit and, um, injure their future health and the health of others. And so I think this is the same reason that, uh, we should support this in public parks and playgrounds. We don't think, we didn't, we should not be, um, providing that example for young children. And, uh, in addition to that, one of the properties, uh, that Michigan City owns as a public park is actually the playground for Marsh School. And so in other school-owned properties, we can go out and tell people, you can't smoke here because this is a school-owned property, uh, and we prohibit it. But at Marsh School, that property outside there is actually city property. And so, uh, our, uh, school personnel have run into problems going out there to tell people. Um, and in, a principal, you know, has told me about it, uh, you know, trying to go out there and tell people not to smoke what, on what we use as a playground, but it's really city property. So we can't really, um, we can't regulate that. So, uh, for those reasons, and of course, uh, the littering problem that comes along with it in parks. Um, I would ask the council to support that and thank, um, Councilwoman Carnes for her concern.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this ordinance?
Nancy Molenhauer, one oh seven K Lane, Michigan City, Indiana. Um, I'm here in support of the Smoking Ban Ordinance Two. Um, did a little research and the national parks have, uh, banned smoking since twenty sixteen. As far as state parks go, Maine and Oregon have banned smoking in the state parks. And the Laporte County parks allowed no indoor smoking. Um, I was concerned when I saw that the golf course was removed from the smoking ban. Um, the Long Beach Country Club here in Michigan City actually has a no-smoking policy. And the only place they do allow smoking is in the pub or in the outside bar area, which is adjoining, um, the, um, the pub there. So, um, I'm asking for reconsideration on the, um, no-smoking at the golf course. Um, I know some people are talking about smoking outside, it dissipates, what does it matter? But if we have a country club in Michigan City that's modeling no-smoking on the golf course, then I do believe we should take that into consideration. Um, I too am very concerned about secondhand smoke. Unfortunately, I was exposed to that very heavily as a child because my dad was a chronic smoker, two to three packs every day. And I know what the effect of breathing that in, um, leads to an adult life, um, you know, various allergies. Um, prone to get, um, pneumonia, bronchitis, things like that. So I really think that we should, um, limit our children, especially their exposure to smoke and smoking. And, um, I don't think it matters where you're at, if you're inside or outside. Um, also too, the modeling of adults', um, smoking, it's not, I think, what we should be promoting in Michigan City, especially when we're aiming to have a healthier community here. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Nicole Coleman. I'm a mental health therapist in the area, and I am very forth for the smoking ordinance on the same levels as everyone has stated previously. Um, I've done my own research as well, and I know that the concern is stating that, oh, it doesn't matter outside. But I did my research and I am glad to share it with you. Um, the N I H National Organization for Health had, did a research study, and it even showed that even in an area with one smoker, it can double to fifty times more, uh, toxins than someone that's not in a smoking area. Um, also going off of modeling behavior, Indiana is one of the only states that is seeing a rise in teenagers and younger adults smoking. And it, being mental health therapist and knowing the childhood development, a lot of it really is based on modeling behavior. Um, children learn what they learn at a young age, and they modeled those who they thought were role models. And a lot of times with smoking, people pick up smoking because of a nostalgia situation that has happened in their childhood. So I think Michigan City could be at the forefront of being a healthier community by passing this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak?
Hello, I'm Laurel Eisert, eleven fifteen Ohio Street.
Ma'am, can you pull the microphone down a little bit? Thank you.
Um, you know, Lake Michigan is the, I mean, the lake shore is like the best part of this town and that it's used as an ashtray is totally inappropriate. So I think this ban for all the parks is really an important thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this subject? Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this subject? Public comment is now closed. Anyone from the council wish to speak on this subject? Councilwoman Carnes?
So I, I grew up in the era of the Marlboro Man and candy cigarettes. And, uh, image that's kind of burned into my mind is my, uh, best friend's four-year-old brother pushing his toy lawnmower in back of his father, who was pushing the real lawnmower, with a candy cigarette in his mouth, emulating his father who was smoking a real cigarette. Um, it's kind of horrifying to think of that now. And, uh, um, I'm hoping that this policy will, that we'll look back on smoking in the park with the same horror. Uh, we have a public health crisis in Indiana. Uh, twenty percent of the women in Indiana smoke, twenty-three percent of the men, and twenty-four percent of those eighteen to forty-four are smoking. We rank thirty-eighth in the country as far as smoke-free policies. Um, Senator Todd Young has recognized this, and he's proposing legislation to change the smoking age to twenty-one. And I think policies like that and this, um, proposed ordinance de-normalize smoking. Um, uh, as Virginia Slims used to say, we've come a long way, baby. We need to come a little bit further, uh, smoking, uh, we want to de-normalize smoking. And, um, uh, it's not compatible with the emissions of the park. So I'm hoping you'll support the smoke-free park, beach, and playground ordinance. Thank you.
Any other council members want to comment on this? Councilman Beatty? No?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Okay, I have a, uh, couple of comments on this. And this goes back to the workshop that we originally had three weeks ago. Uh, one of my issues is the enforcement of this ordinance? And how is this ordinance going to be enforced? Uh, the city has a lot of, the city has a lot of ordinances that are not enforced. You know, there's issues that I'd like to get resolved in the neighborhoods, and, you know, they don't get enforced and their folks are breaking ordinances, but either there's not enough people to get it done or, you know, people just want to turn their head and don't want to do anything. And just like Chief Swistec told us, and a lot of you folks were there, and he said, arresting someone or giving someone a ticket for smoking a cigarette is not on the top of his agenda as far as policing in Michigan City. Second of all, you have to actually see the person doing it to be able to enforce the ordinance. So that's by me went and got a lifeguard, for example, at the beach and said, Mr. Lifeguard, this gentleman over here was smoking, but he's not smoking when I, when the lifeguard sees him, the lifeguard can't do nothing, neither can the police officer. And the other thing, down at Washington Park, you know, who are we going to entrust now to enforce this ordinance besides the police officers? Are we gonna tell the lifeguards to look out, check the beach, see if anybody's smoking? Keep an eye on that today. But in the meantime, there's people out in the water. That's lifeguard's main job is to make sure there's nobody being hurt out in the water versus looking to see if somebody's smoking a cigarette with his binoculars going up and down the shoreline. Uh, I just, the, the enforcement issue here is that it won't be enforced. I understand that there's a smoking issue, and I understand that Indiana is the last in a lot of health issues. But all these folks make their own choices in life. I don't smoke, I never have smoked. I played athletics, I knew better not to smoke, and that was a good thing. Uh, we all make that choice, yes or no? Do we smoke, not smoke? And, you know, as far as the state goes in, in Laporte County, you know, nothing I can, I really can do about that. But in, in our parks, to me, it's an enforcement, enforcement issue. And how that's gonna happen, and nobody has been able to explain that to me, how this, how it's gonna be enforced. I've heard that it's gonna be, one thing I did hear, that it's gonna be self-enforcement. So if people see a sign that they were gonna automatically not do it and walk into the park, they might, they might not. But if they do, who's gonna be there to enforce it? I don't think anybody's gonna call a police officer down to the park, down to Gardena Playground, because somebody's smoking. And the police will say, well, maybe we're not coming to that because we have a more serious situation going on. So that's, that's my viewpoint on it. Uh, I'm not gonna support this. Uh, I believe the intent is good, is the enforcement issue, and that issue has not been addressed to me. And when the chief of police says that he can't enforce it, I don't know how it's ever gonna get enforced if the chief of police says he can't do it. That being said, Councilwoman Carnes?
So the enforcement issue, I think, is a, is a red herring. I think most people, uh, when they see a no-smoking sign abide by that no-smoking sign, just as they abide by stop signs when there's not police officers around and, uh, school zone signs when there's not police officers around. Uh, there was no suggestion ever that we would expect the Michigan City Police to patrol the beaches and arrest people for smoking cigarettes, which I think is ludicrous. And, um, uh, like I said, I think this is a, a red herring. There's all kinds of laws that people abide by voluntarily, and I think most smokers. And I think most smokers are good people and they will abide by those rules.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and just to respond to that, apparently nobody thought that the Michigan City Police would be involved and that's apparently what your comment is in the, in the enforcement of this. However, I mean, the chief of police thought it was important enough for him to show up at this workshop and to state his comments that the Michigan City Police are not putting this on the top of their radar to enforce this. Okay, any other council comments? Having none. Is there a motion to?
No, we have that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh Ms. Nyland on the vote?
Ms. Carnes?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Nay.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Preswalinski?
Nay.
Mr. Simmons?
Nay.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
We have three in favor and four opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyland. Our next ordinance on third reading by title only, without objection?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, creating section twenty-two dash eighty-five in chapter twenty-two of the Michigan City Municipal Code to waive permit fees of city-owned projects. And this is introduced by Mr. Stemley.
And I know that the author is not here this evening, so he can't comment on it. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone here from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone here from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Having none? Any council comments?
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion to approve by Councilman Hamilton and seconded by Councilman Fitzpatrick. Are there any further council comments? Having none, Ms. Nyland on the vote, please?
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Preswalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
And Ms. Carnes?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyland. Our next ordinance on third reading by title only, without objection. Ms. Nyland?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, an ordinance vacating portions of public alley within the city of Michigan City located adjacent to twenty-four oh four East Michigan Boulevard. And this is introduced by Mr. Simmons and Ms. Carnes.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add this evening? Sue Simmons?
I've rode this through this alley and drove this property about ten times in the last two weeks. I, I don't see an issue. I just don't.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Is there anyone from the public? Oh, and there was a formal public hearing held on May the eighth on this ordinance? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Having none? Are there any council comments?
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion to approve by Councilman Hamilton and seconded by Councilman Simmons. Any other council comments? Ms. Nyland on the vote?
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Preswalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
Ms. Carnes?
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
We have six in favor and one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyland. Our next ordinance on third reading by title only, without objection, please?
Well, we do have more. An ordinance on third reading by title only, amending the municipal code to provide for payment of members of the commission for women for attending commission meetings. And this is introduced by Mr. Fitzpatrick.
And does the author have anything he'd like to uh add? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Having none? Public comment is closed. Any council comments?
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion to approve by Councilman Hamilton and seconded by Councilman Beatry. Are there any other council comments? Any other council comments?
Yeah, the comment.
Councilman?
Yeah, my only, the only issue I have with uh this, you know, we're going in to set up to pay for a commission for women. I understand the work that they do. They do a lot of work. Um but now we can start opening the door to all of the different committees and the different uh commissions and everything like that, you know, in in my mind, um a lot of it is volunteer work, uh to volunteer for the city. So I'm just wondering if we're gonna be opening the door here where we're gonna end up having to pay all of them. Uh so that's my, my biggest concern, just down the road. But like I said, I do understand the work that they do. They do a ton of work. Um so that's where I am on that. And that is why I cannot support uh this time.
Councilman Fitzpatrick, uh question, is there any amount per meeting? Is that what you're, are you going on monthly?
That would be for meeting attendance and it would probably be appropriated during the budget.
Okay.
Then it's to be in effect January first, twenty, twenty twenty.
Okay. Okay, there's been a motion made in a second. And Ms. Nyland on the vote?
Mr. Preswalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
Ms. Carnes?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
And Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
We have six in favor and one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyland. Our next ordinance on third reading by title only, without objection?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Boyd Development Fund to provide funding for engineering costs to repair the catwalk on pier of at Washington Park. And this is introduced by Mr. Stemley, Ms. Carnes, Mr. Preswalinski, and Mr. Dabney.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Nyland. And there was a formal public hearing that was held on May eighth on this ordinance. Do the authors have anything that they would like to add? Authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Having none? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Having none? Public comment is closed. Any further council comments on this ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Hamilton, seconded by Councilman Beatry. Any further council comments? Having none, Ms. Nyland on the vote?
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Ms. Carnes?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
And Mr. Preswalinski?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyland. Under unfinished business, under nominations, the common council has two appointments to the Youth Leadership Commission. And one appointment is for one year initially and one appointment is for two years. Are there any nominations?
We didn't receive any forms.
None?
So I've reached out to both high schools and uh same with graduation and prom and school ending. Uh I don't know what the application process is being held up by, but still reaching out to youth organizations and uh youth and communities.
Okay, alright. So we have no nominations at this time. We will move on to the next item of business under nominations and the common council has one appointment to the Michigan City Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund Committee. And the incumbent is Mr. James Sturecki, whose term expires on sixth, nine, twenty nineteen. And I know everyone received a common council boarding commissions form from Mr. Sturecki. At this time, I will take nominations to the uh Michigan City Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund. Are there any nominations?
I don't know, Skip Sturecki.
Uh Ms. Nyland put down Mr. James Skip Sturecki as a nominee. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations are now closed and we will vote, well, if we wanted to suspend the rules, we could vote on it now since there's no other nominees in.
I move to suspend rules.
Okay. Okay, so we suspended and all in favor signify by saying aye. To suspend rules, okay. And all in favor of voting for Skip Sturecki back to the Michigan City Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund, signify by saying aye. All who oppose? Mr. Skip Sturecki has been reappointed to the Revolving Loan Commission. And this evening, the common council has one appointment to the Youth Leadership Commission and the term is for one year. And the nominee is Nathan Patrick. And would you, if you'd like to say a few words, I'll give you the opportunity. I know you're the only one being voted in, but I know you're here, you're looking good, you got your shirt and tie on, so why waste the opportunity if you wanna get up there and say a few words?
This is amazing. Your hard work on this. As you know, I came before the council a couple months ago for the African-American male social status in hopes that I can do what I'll be able to get the opportunity to do on this commission. So I'd just like to thank Mr. Fitzpatrick on his hard work.
Thank you, Nathan. So at this time, we will vote and we can all vote, uh you know, by signify by saying aye. All those in favor of uh putting Nathan Patrick on the Youth Leadership Commission signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Patrick. And we also have a vote this evening. Mayor Mears requesting the advice and consent of the members of the Michigan City Common Council regarding his appointment of Mr. Roger Protrats, Protrats as a member of the Michigan City Historic Review Board. And all those in favor of putting Mr. Roger Protrats back on the Michigan City Historical Review Board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, Mr. Roger Protrats has been reappointed to the Michigan City Historic Review Board. And with that, are there any comments from the co, from the public this evening? Name an address, ma'am, for the record?
My name is Emily Ruff and I'm the director of the Barker Mansion. Um so I deeply apologize for earlier. Uh I was operating under a previous assumption um from the other institution that I worked at that uh underneath the line item, if anyone was present, anyone was there. Um for future, I will submit a report to the clerk's office. That way it will be fully on the docket, so thank you so much for helping me out and helping navigate that. I wanted to uh let the council know that the Barker Mansion, um again, is up and running. We're going to be transitioning into our summer hours, uh where we'll be open every day except for Monday. And that will be the day where uh the staff are able to reconvene, they're able to do any upkeep that is needed for the mansion. The Barker Mansion is also partnering with the Calumet Heritage uh Project. This is an institution that has been created. Um our host site is the Chicago Field Museum and we're actually working with several different institutions across uh the Calumet region, including museums, archives, libraries, public historic sites. Um and this is going to be creating um a new voice uh for the Calumet region. We're going to be talking about the cultural significance of the area, um the tension and uh diversity between the industry that's brought into the Calumet region, but also the natural resources. There's going to be three traveling exhibits um from different sites and they will eventually end up at the Chicago Field Museum. Our uh regional exhibit is going to open in twenty twenty. Um and the Barker Mansion will be doing quite a bit of work with that. Um and it'll end up in the Chicago Field Museum in twenty twenty-one. Um so during that time, during twenty twenty, we're going to be doing quite a few um promotional events. And one of which we are actually starting at the end of the month. So during that one year uh from the exhibit opening, uh we'll be working with several museums, archives, and libraries, uh creating traveling trunks or traveling lesson plans that will be able to be lent out to teachers. Um these lesson plans will meet state standards. Uh because the Calumet region is not only in Indiana, um it does go into Illinois. These will meet both Indiana and Illinois state standards. And they'll be able to um be useful for teachers, uh for lesson plans, whether it's for science classes, for history classes. We're looking at um aiming for fourth grade since that's usually when Indiana's state history is taught. Um so the Barker Mansion will be doing quite a bit of um the publicity, publicity and the footwork for a lot of that. Um so we're continuing all of our partnerships um throughout the region. We're also continuing um to adapt most of our research and programming to fit uh some of these events and these partnerships. Um it is a wonderful opportunity to be included um with some wonderful institutions like the Field Museum. Um and it's definitely a big step. We're very honored to be a part of it. Uh I also wanted to ask if there are any questions um regarding uh information at the Barker Mansion. We're going to be having a public uh board meeting. Um the Barker Civic Center Council is going to be meeting um on Thursday at ten AM at the Barker Mansion. Um this is a meeting that is open to the public. Um so I invite all of you to attend if you are able to. Um do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a couple of comments of the Barker Mansion. And first of all, you do a fantastic job.
Thank you.
It's beautiful on the inside and you do a very nice job. The grounds look great, the flowers look great and keep up the good work. It's it's like a showplace on Washington Street.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It'll be nice to have the plaza uh right in front of us. We're really looking forward to having that.
There you go.
And we will be, um the reason why I wanted to let you know about this partnership with the Calumet Heritage um project is because several people will be, um our, our tourism is going to increase significantly from this. Um so it is something that we are trying to enhance in the community. So thank you so much for, for that feedback.
Yeah, and I appreciate you staying.
Of course, yes. I apologize. I, I uphold Robert's Rules of Order to my core and um as soon as I came up here, I was like, this is not the right moment. We're just gonna keep moving. So I apologize and I thank you for your patience.
That's okay, yeah. Cause when you originally walked past, I thought you were going to the microphone and then you sat down, so.
I was, yeah.
Well, we don't, we don't let you slid in, no problem. Anyway, thank you very much. Okay, any other questions or comments from council members? Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public which should speak on any subject here this evening?
Nathan Patrick, one eighteen Jackson. I had two things. The first thing was on the uh the uh smoking. There was a comment made by, um I forget your name, about uh Long Beach Country Club with smoking. Um I have to be an employee there. And employees can smoke in one designated place. Uh members can smoke cigars in the pub room in the winter as uh we put exhaust fans in there, but there is no ban on the golf course at all. So I wanted to clarify that. The second thing, um with the report, I had a couple of questions with the port, report given by Craig Phillips and Don Babcock. As you know, you all were saying, it was a very exhaustive uh report, which it was. And so I didn't grasp everything of that. But I did grasp the ending of when Don Babcock's, well, he was saying that they were, you all were working together for uh a three-point, some odd million bucks for uh Michigan City area schools with, for tablets. But my question is, um is that what you uh really think uh young people need is more screen time? more screen time and what can we do or what can you, what, what do you think we can do, um, to better use that three point some odd bucks to better enhance the relationship between teacher and student without the screen because a screen is a barrier? It's a block. So those were my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We can get, if you, we can, uh, Mr. Patrick, you can talk to any council person after the meeting, uh, on that subject and see what their viewpoints are. Okay, any comments from the council? Any comments from the council? Councilwoman Carnes?
And just for, uh, the public's information and to, and for the sponsor of the ordinance edification, the Commission for Women, uh, uh, compensation is fifty dollars per meeting. Uh, I'd also like to, um, let everyone know that the Sustainability Commission is, uh, very close to up and running. Uh, they're going to have their organizational, uh, meeting on the twenty-ninth at six thirty PM in the West Conference Room and they'll be electing officers, but I'm happy to say that we have a full complement of voting members and I believe we have identified, uh, two and possibly, uh, the third for the, uh, student members as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman, uh, Dabney?
Alright, uh, just wanted to announce that tomorrow night, uh, down at the fire training station at five thirty, there will be a public information session in regards to the Community Development Block Grant, um, where people can get the questions, uh, answer on how to apply, um, and you know, what those funds can be used for, so that is tomorrow at the fire training station at five thirty PM. I think I have that right. I'm trying to go off the top of my head where, yep, five thirty PM, so. Um, and then, uh, I have a couple of people that called me about that today and so anybody out there that's watching us in the Eastport neighborhood, if you cannot make it, um, we're going to have a few volunteers that are going to be walking around and actually giving flyers about that, um, i- if you cannot make it. So we'll be trying to get that information out as much as possible. That grant's been around for a long, long time, but, um, the information just has not seemed to get on into the public very well. So we'll be trying to reach out to the folks over in the Eastport neighborhood and also I had somebody call me from the West Side neighborhood as well, uh, to try to get that information out. Thank you.
Any other comments from council people? Councilman Hamilton?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Support. Okay, Councilman Beatry, by the raised other hand, he got the second and, okay, uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Meeting's over.